Just wait. Once. One. Oh, you're recording. You're good. You're good. Okay. Sounds good. All right. I'd like to call the Voluntown Board of Education meeting to order at 6:06 PM. If you all will say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to its representative democracy. The Constitution stands on its own accord. It is a constitutional liberty and justice of the people.
Hi, sir.
Just mind taking a quick roll call, please. And Megan Wick is joining us virtually. Kathy Burnett. Yeah. Our caller is not.
I've kind of spread out here. I'm looking online.
Professor Wilson and Valerie Giannone.
Budget.
Okay, I'll recite the Board of Education mission statement. The Voluntown Board of Education's mission is to provide our students with skills essential to reach their highest potential in a safe environment for learning as they aspire to become responsible, respectful, and civic-minded members of society. We commit to help educate, challenge, and inspire each child to excel as lifelong learners who can adapt constructively in an ever-changing multicultural and technological world. Okay. There are no citizens' comments and no guests present this evening. Yeah. So hopefully, we do have a fairly brief agenda, which is a good thing. Never budget always is a wholesome discussion, so we'll have that and likely a brief executive session. So. And just a reminder that we do have a Thursday meeting of February 27th, so the second meeting, that's when we'll do our meeting with Mary Broderick, the Cabe consultant. Okay. With that, I have, if you've had a chance to review the packet, the consent agenda, are we, do we have a motion put forth to approve as presented?
Motion.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion passes to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moving to item number three, administrative reports. Let's start with the principals.
All right. So we wrapped up one charity, so the longest season I see ever is winter season with basketball and cheerleading. It's the never, you know, everybody knows. It's very, very long, but it was really good. We held Spirit Week last week. The Honor Society is really pushing for this emblem on the center of the basketball court. So they have been raising funds through Spirit Week concessions, things like that. They're hosting volleyball tournaments, so they're asking alumni and kids, so they'll be doing that in March. Ms. Glidden has been working with them, so they designed it through this company. They gave them a quote on what it would cost to have it put back on the center of the court, the Eagle and Voluntown Elementary. So it is one of their largest projects, I think, that they wanted to do for the community. So a lot of times they do things for community and outreach, you know, for example, like wildfires or people that have been hurt by hurricanes, but this is something that they really felt driven to do for their school community. So we've done a lot of talking, you know, with them on how you approach and raise funds and do things like that. So they actually have raised quite a bit, so they're proud of themselves for moving forward with that. So we'll see how that pans out. One of the things that, I don't know if I've ever mentioned this, we have our own news program in school, and we offer that as a club. And so in the olden days, as Mrs. Valencourt would say, we used to do announcements with this big broadcast system and talk over the intercom. But we've progressed, and we took that over through one of our clubs in the afternoon. And we actually have Kids in Anchors, and I'll bring one, I'll pick one of the clips and I'll share. But it's great to see, they write the script, they do all the editing, they put the video together, they work together on the artwork and things like that. So they have a little production team, and it's one of the highlights for Kids in the Morning, for morning announcements, going through the WVES. We do have a green screen in our STEM room, so they go green screen and they do all these things. And it's great for kids who maybe don't do art club, athletics, music, band, it's just another outlet for them, so.
Public speaking.
It was, it's great public speaking, yeah. It's fun to watch. One of the things coming up is athletic music pasta dinner, so this is Mrs. Mullen's last, you know, pasta dinner. So if anybody would like tickets, athletes and musicians have them, you can contact the office and we will get them to you. So. We have a learning night coming up on the 20th, so that is literacy and math. We decided to combine them this year, so my staff is putting together an escape room, there's a couple other math and literacy activities, so that's on February 20th. So. We are almost through February, it feels like forever, but we've had the 100-day, we're well past it. All right? I think that's it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The Honor Society, could you, next meeting, give us a figure of how much they need? Because, and if they're still raising funds, if they're not going to make it.
Yeah, absolutely. That's great, and that is one of the things Adam had said to them. And I did talk to them, I said, you know, maybe, like, when you go and ask for sponsorships for something, you know, maybe someone needs to go to YSB and go to a meeting and ask. So trying to get them to think outside the box, go to Rec Commission. All these people in the community use our gym, you know, maybe that's something to ask even $100, you know, to donate towards them. PTO, they've already talked to Mrs. Davis, and they talked about, like, running a program for her, you know, in lieu. But that would be great, the board, yes, if the board.
Especially the Rec Department, they definitely use it.
Yep.
And YSB.
Yeah.
And YSB. So they're working on a letter and, their letter and, you know, and how to ask and do that, you know, in the world, you ask for, you know, donations for things like that.
Or if you need to see them present, one of them is in the YSB.
Yeah, and we talked about that, too, so that's actually really good.
Set actions.
Yep. It's their community, so, you know, they want to do something for, I think they think of it as their legacy before they graduate, but, you know, they're, they're thinking. We used to have one.
I think they're close to halfway.
Oh, we are, yeah, they are close to halfway. They're like well over probably $1,500.
Yeah.
They raised quite a bit, so, yeah. Very exciting, you know.
It's amazing how expensive that emblem is.
Yes, it's very, I was like, wow, okay, all right, so we got, we got a long way to go. Yeah. So it's probably a little over like $3,000, maybe $3,500, so we're about half, you know, almost halfway.
We need to do a approved bake sale or something, let us know.
Yeah, yeah. I know. I know.
Okay. Any other questions for Mrs. Appletto?
Special one.
Yeah.
Lloyd is not available tonight. His report is on your desk, and right now we have 54 students with IEPs and 48 students with 504. I'll be talking a little bit more about special ed when we go over the budget, okay?
Okay, and moving on to superintendent report.
My report, you have my calendar of events, and then we also have the enrollment, which right now is 213 for K through eight, pre-K through eight, and 125 at the high school. There will be a slight increase the next month. So far, we've returned $15,183 to the town. There's a note in there on Spirit Week with the National Junior High fundraiser that I think Amy went over. And then there's a listing of the cancellations. We've had, actually, as of today, four two-hour delays, five two-hour delays, and we missed one day on the 2/6/25. There's a required annual meeting notice that is in the packet, and that just explains who we have for 403B plan schools. We had a Power School issue, and this is a statement that Power School issued. We did not have a problem, there was a breach, but we did not have a problem in our school district. But as is required, if there's any breaches in data, the companies are supposed to keep us informed. There's some information about, you know, from Governor Lamont with the K-12 schools and protection of classrooms pertaining to immigrant enforcement activities. There's also the Connecticut guidance pertaining to immigrant activities. And then there's a note of the Office of Budgetment. There was a notice sent out about freezing some budget, but this was a response, and then the next page was what happened, but they, they did not go through with that. And there's a note to press release from Courtney about the pause in federal funding, but that, as I said, was withdrawn. And then there's a note from, a letter from Sean McKenna regarding the tuitions at Griswold High School next year and their policy for tuitions. There's also a draft of the 25-26 school calendar, and that's followed by a sample of the Griswold and the Norwich schools. Did we take a vote to approve that next year's calendar?
Yes, last week.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we did, okay. So that's, you know, that's just for your information. Then there's the annual, there's the monthly, excuse me, notice from Cabe about policies, and this just is to keep board members, you know, updated. So that's my report, okay?
Great. Any questions for Mr. Burrows, or should we move on to the budget?
Yeah, there's, there's a summary of the budget at your desk. The last board meeting, I think I had $118,000, and then I was working on that, and I was quite excited about maybe being, coming in with 152. Due to special ed changes, we've had some changes just within the last week. And I would like you to go to page one of the budget, and you can see that with regular education, regular education, that's down minus 0.52%. So we did well with that. And then you go to special ed, and the first line, the 1,201,11, that's, that's gone down $60,000 because we, we had a teacher retire, and we're not replacing that teacher. But then you look down below, and I'm calling your attention to line number 563, private tuition. And that went up $120,000. So the special ed down at the bottom went up 7.69% or $122,225. And we just received, you know, two new special ed placements, and the cost was very, very expensive, and I'll be talking a little bit more, more about that as we go along. So this has just come in, in the past week, and I thought that we would have a budget that would be in a range, but I'm sad to say that this is now at, you know, this is now at 4.34%. And we have some decisions to make as we go through this board meeting. The other thing that I would like to point out is on page two, with health services. We have on line 340, other professional services, and we have a handicapped child that needs the hope of a certified nurse assistant, and we have to go with some purchase services on that. Now, that could be a bouncing number because we're not hiring a full-time person, because if the student requires reduced hours, then that would, that would do some savings. Some of the other budgets, speech and language services, it went up 5.5. We've had to increase contracted professional services. Improvement of instruction went up above $500. Our library media is just a rearranging, but that's at 4.2. Instructional-related technology is at minus 24.16%. We had a technology person and we've, who retired, is retiring, and we rearranged that. And the other thing that we have to review right now is that with the retirements, Jackie Valencourt, a math teacher, is leaving, and we reviewed this, and we're having a reassignment of existing staff. Mr. Crotoro will be the math teacher for the junior high, and he has his engineering degree and other things. So we have to talk about that technology position over the, you know, next few board meetings. With the Board of Ed, it went up a little bit, and then the superintendent's office, there was, you know, a bit of an increase there as well, but I wanted to make sure that the board had funds in there with, you know, when they get to negotiating with the new person who might be coming in. Principal's office, there are some, you know, increases there, but, you know, within the normal range. Fiscal services, the big one there was other professional services. We had to work with updating some online programs, and there were some increases with the cost of payroll. Operation and maintenance, that's up 7.49%. We're just trying to stay ahead of the projects that exist, and I do want you to know that with the town, we're, we're putting our projects in with the town capital improvement plan, and that will include money that they have to think about, replacing the generator for about $130, the school entrance for about $44,000, the new fire alarm system complete throughout the whole school, $250, gym sliding door, $140,000, there's a panel upgrade of $140,000, and there's about $17,000 in central office repairs. Now, the building committee finished all of their projects utilizing the AARP funds that turned out to be almost $1 million, taking care of HVAC updates, and we also used some retained funds to start on an asbestos abatement program. But these older things that are equipment are, you know, 34, 35 years old now, and they need to have replacement at some point, but as Jody Gredier came in and told the board, you know, everything is repaired and it's safe, but rather than looking at these through the school budget, Tracy and I talked about this with Kate, and we wanted to see if we could put this in the town budget, and quite frankly, there were a lot of grants in the past, and we've been looking. I am not sure about the, you know, the future of the grants that are happening, but we'll watch with what's happening with the, with the, you know, the repairs within the building. Some school districts do huge building plans, building improvement plans, multimillion-dollar plans. Our last one was 2000, it was 25 years ago, but things have been holding up, and we have a 1953 section of the building, and, you know, we have kept ahead of repairs. So our repairs and maintenance might be just a little bit higher, but we have to make sure that we, you know, we take care of these things as we go. We've never had to go back to the town for extra money, but one of the things we talked about, and before I got these outplacements, I was going to put in a reoccurring fund for the last item in the budget for building improvement projects, but it wasn't fair to put this into this budget with this recent increase. If you look at transportation, there's a $93,383 increase. If you look at line 430, that's $152,000. That's going from $2,000 to $152. That is replacement of buses, and I have all sorts of literature that I'm going to share with you on that because we have some decisions to make with that. If you look at, if you look at special ed transportation, that went down $33,000, $34,000, and just last week, I had it going down, I had it going down like $70,000, but we're required with some special ed mandated placements to provide transportation. The food service, we took a chance, they, they had free and reduced lunch services, and we wound up, you know, benefiting from that. As I said, we, we, we served what, $43,000, $44,000 that year, and then, as you can see, we had a zero year as well, and then we, we kept it up with, you know, $6,000. I had to increase that to $39,733 because we were paying some other costs out of the reimbursement that we were receiving from the free lunch and the free breakfast for everybody. So there's been some charges that have, you know, come to the local government. The extracurricular activities dynamite program, that's up 11%. Community service is really the, you know, the Youth Services Bureau that we do. So this is where we are with the budget, and I will tell you, it's been a roller coaster ride, because I was very happy about nine, 10 days ago with coming in with a budget, and then I received a phone call about some special ed things. And then where do we go from here? Well, I think it'd be good if we got into the next topic on transportation, but if anybody has any questions, please feel free to answer that. Now, you're supposed to vote on March, March 13th, for the annual budget, so we still have another month, and then we send that into the town, but we're looking at funding. And as part of the budget process, it was right behind the memo that, of Lloyd's, Lloyd's proposal, there was a summary that I gave you about the ECS. And if you see that letter, there's a letter in there that was on the table when we came in, it was right behind Lloyd's report, okay? And this is, this is something, this is something of interest, because I attended a meeting with 20 superintendents last week, and it was the beginning of the week, and then they were talking about the ECS. So I wrote the chair of that committee about my view of the ECS. What does it say, February 7th? Okay. So I sent this to her, and she said, Adam, this is good, it really describes the situation, and she sent it out to the 31 superintendents that are on that group. I also sent it in a response to Tracy, to Tracy, and I also sent it to Heather Summers and Brian Lanou. And this is very interesting, because we have been held harmless for five years in a row at $2117,243, and there's all sorts of PR out there right now saying we're increasing funding for, for education. Well, guess what? Look at the list, the list below. Who has the largest decrease in Eastern Connecticut? Us, on our little $7 million budget. Then you can see in order Sterling in Ostonington, and it goes down to Union, and, you know, I, I, I am hopeful that the legislators will hold harmless, but the governor likes the school finance project formula, and that is a nonprofit group. Now, flip on the backside, because this really tells a story. And the backside, I went back to our previous years. In 2016, we received $2,550,020 from the state, from our ECS. Then it went down, that was a big, big challenge for us, to $2174. Then it went back up miraculously. Then you can see the years that have remained at $2117,243, and next year, that might be reduced by, what did I say, $114,566? And guess what? Next year, there might be another cut, and guess what? For the next five years, it might be cut, so we could stand a reduction of probably a half million dollars over the next five years. We have to prepare for that. So I hope that the legislators will hold harmless the towns of Eastern Connecticut and not cut us. And, and quite frankly, the, the total ECS grant is going up, I think, like $50 million. And, and why should we, why should we have a cut? So, so this is something that we can monitor during the budget process, and I will tell you, they usually have a town meeting, you know, in May, but, you know, we've worked with this election before, if we have to delay that meeting so that we understand what the funding is, then that can help us with passing a budget and setting the mill rate. So, you know, that's, that's where we are with the budget. Any questions at all? I am hopeful that this will change.
Without that cut, we'd only be at about 3% in the ECC. We'd be at like 3%.
Let me, let me see if this is working, Kathy, because I, you know.
We got about a 300,000 increase, but, you know, that's like not important, so.
Okay, well, that's good, we'll see.
So the online programs for the fiscal services for $63,000, what is that?
Hey, well, please say it. Hey, well.
Which one did she say?
Where are you? Sorry.
Fiscal services.
Okay.
For 63. Up from 34.
Didn't you say we've had to update some programs, like Hey, Well, and stuff?
Fiscal services.
Yeah.
Yes, there was a, there was a program that we had to get to streamline some things with the fiscal services, but again, I'll, I'll check on that, Megan, to make sure that that's accurate, okay? Good pickup.
If you look at the actual, from the previous year, it was 61, which was the actual spend, so.
What we actually spent.
It probably would make sense to not what we.
Yeah, I just hear this, like, if there's something that can be shopped around, I mean, it just seems like $63,000 for an online program is.
It might be paychecks, maybe the.
Yes, we'll take a look at that.
So they just pass the cost on to the.
Onto everybody else.
Everything's going up with everything.
It's just weird that it goes like 61, 34, there was a few 34s, then it's 45, you know, it's just.
And then it like jumped, right?
Variable, yeah.
It's when 61 dropped to 34, went back to 63.
Now, the CNA position for 40, is that something that our Paris, are there any Paris who are also? Are there any paris who are also CNA? Is that good?
Yeah. Yeah. Our paraprofessionals do have, we hired paraprofessionals with special services. So they do a lot of toileting, changing that. But this is beyond really that special services qualification.
But to remain a CNA, they have to work a thousand hours a year. So if they're looking for us as a parrot, they can't maintain their CNA license.
Yeah.
So that, but then it wouldn't be a nurse thing as well? Like, we have a nurse on campus, we have a.
It would be like direct healthcare for the student.
Like a student has.
We actually have two students that would be in particular benefit from that.
We'll, we'll get a clarification on that. But last year, we spent sixty-one on that account. Forty-four the year before, sixty-eight the year before, forty-seven, forty-nine. So that there were some things that I'll have to check as far as what it's related to and get back to you on that.
And, and in this, as far as a CNA goes, it's more so the support in lifting, moving, walking, and those requirements, additionally feeding.
They have to pass. CNAs are trained.
Oh, you own that too.
They have to have so many hours as a CNA to keep their license.
This isn't working for me.
You know, I think it's a thousand.
It's not coming through.
That's why I was just curious, like, we have a school nurse who's obviously saying it would be beyond what he would be able to do if being, taking care of the general population. Got it, of students, it would be beyond that.
And it's cheaper than endorse.
Does Terry, would Terry oversee the CNA, provide supervision?
Um, yes. But in this, so like in that non-certified contract, there is no position for this. So that's why you outsource. So it would be outsourced for the length of time that the student would be remaining with us. And then, you know, we would contractually like what we would need with that.
Is there any consideration of that now? Like any malpractice, like malpractice or insurance?
Yeah, we'd have to go through that, like whole, you know, process. Just like our OT and PT, we sub-contract, you know, for certain hour wise. But it would be.
His license.
Our ring can supervise the CNA, but then LPM couldn't. We had an LPM.
No, no, but just like his, his license is now on the line.
Yeah, I mean, he wouldn't, he wouldn't be the super, like, he wouldn't be supervising them, but.
Your license is never on the line as long as you don't tell them to do something wrong. It's only if you tell them, go ahead and feed them that food, and that's not their diet. That's when your license becomes on the line, as long as you follow whatever the law is.
And whatever medical orders are.
Yeah, whatever, the medical, if you said, go, I don't care if they're allergic to Tylenol, go ahead and give them some. Then you put your license on the line.
Again, we can review the food services and the cost with that.
Are we hiring somebody else for food services? Or it was another salary being covered by the S R funds?
What about contracting it out completely?
That's, that's been reviewed, Chris.
Yes, no.
You know, that, that's something to review as well. And there's companies, as a matter of fact, at the superintendent's meeting the other day, they, they took a survey and it was, you know, a number of people who did contract out. So we can, we can give a call on that.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how much it would cost to contract out versus in-house. Like, do we make enough money? And like, our fund almost just, it just pays for itself essentially, it's over and over. But I don't know if we serve enough lunch.
We have a committee that looks at the food service.
You'd have to look at the numbers as well.
Going forward.
Well, the best way to do that would be to call the companies themselves and ask them to have a sales meeting with you. And ask all the questions and then come up with a proposal or not. A committee of townspeople is just a waste of time when it comes to that.
Well, we could, we could look into it, Chris. My sister was the head dietitian for a corporation that served schools. And her kitchen, where she was located, prepared six thousand meals a day. And they, they trucked them out to different, you know, schools. So there are companies that do that. If you want a price match, we can see what we can do with, you know, getting a quote, okay? And when I put this in, you know, there, there were some things that we were paying for out of the reimbursement that was coming, but it cut, it was cut back. And we, we got caught with that. So something, another one to review. You hit all the ones that I was thinking that we'd have to review. But we can get back to you by the next meeting. And as I said, if we need more time to review things, we can talk to Tracy about that. And oh, in your packet, there was a lot of information about the town's budgeting system. But we, we work hand in hand with the town. And, and, you know, Anthony Madera, the treasurer, and Tracy Hanson. And I just included those so you could look at all of the things that we consider as we develop our budget and, and work that through. Okay, any other issues with the budget?
Yeah, I think one of the key points, takeaways when meeting with Tracy and Julie was, you know, just getting it to them, just all the items for the capital improvement plan and, and things that might come across their, their desk by in the, you know, February, March timeframe for. It would, it wouldn't be for this year's, you know, it'd be like the following year. So it's like, you have to think that far in advance. But that's kind of like the, the key sweet spot timing, anytime before then. But like, you know, February, March, and once you get to March, you're like, you're looking at complete cutoff for the following year. So we obviously are in great communication with them and have the improvement plan going. But it was just mindful for me to hear their date, their cutoff date.
So looking at the food services, it wouldn't be for this year, it'd have to be for next year.
Of course.
You know, because of the way the budget, we gotta put out a budget next month, vote on it and get it out.
So my other question is about the tuition for students. Um, because NFA, and correct me if I'm wrong. NFA, we have a contract, so we know exactly what we're paying for NFA for the next, how many years?
Well, we know, well, well, we know what we're paying next year based on this year's enrollment. And as soon as we get to the end of the year, we would have the student enrollment that would plan for the twenty-six, twenty-seven. So it's about two years ahead with what we'll know with tuition.
So there's no way of kind of coming up with a contract with these schools to set tuition for a chunk of years? I'm just looking at like every single year, we see a cost increase with, with all of these high schools. And so my first feeling is that, I mean, this is just me. I think we need to whittle them down and kind of get rid of some of these options that are every single year becoming cost prohibitive to our budget. But then on the flip side, I'm wondering if there is a way for us to.
Lock in a party.
Lock in a rate and say, we're gonna still, you're still gonna be on our list for the next five years guaranteed and lock in a rate for those three years or five years or, or whatever they're willing to do so that it's not a constant fluctuation in the budget. And, you know, we guess what the tuition's gonna be. And then all of a sudden, we get a letter from Griswold that it's going up. And then we guess what NFA is gonna be. And all of a sudden, we get a letter from NFA that it's gonna go up.
It's gonna go up.
Okay, but just to do a little comparison, this year for the high school tuition, we're sending Griswold three hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars. And next year, we have budgeted three hundred twenty-six thousand, eight fifty-three. So in effect, it's, it's just a little less, Val. And then last year with the NFA, we had five hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight eighty-seven. And next year, we have five hundred forty-six thousand, five fifteen. So both Griswold and NFA regular tuitions have gone down.
Right, but it's gone down because we've lost enrollment, right? It's not going down because they're deciding to make their tuition go down.
No, there were tuition increases, but the enrollment went down a little bit.
Right, but I would like to stay a number, at least stay the same per student instead of seeing a constant, I, I understand that the overall number went down. But that's just because we have a decline in enrollment. That's not because.
Okay, well, that would require some negotiations. Now, last year with Wheeler, we spent a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven eighty, fifty-four. And next year, we have budgeted right now, a hundred and sixty-three, nine eighty-two. But remember, the enrollments are changing. We, we have things that change, you know, during these next few months with the enrollment.
Right, so that's why I was curious if there was a way of locking it in, contractually locking in a per student rate for more than one year so that every year we're not scrambling for what is your change to the per student rate?
You'd have to talk to the Griswold.
Yes.
Right, that's why I was asking if it's ever been done before, yes.
Griswold's always historically been kind of a creep to us. We, we added Wheeler while Griswold was still a school. We could decide to end our association with Griswold or just let the students that are in there finish so senior and that's that. And we were talking about sending buses down south anyway. We all need to look at new ways to save the taxpayers money. And if, we've all complained about Griswold at this table. And why not just cut our losses and.
No, I, I mean, I think that's, that's a little unfair because we have.
I think it's more of a legacy thing. I mean, the whole finances and treatment of our students, they really haven't been that good.
Well, we did go and meet with them and they, they explained to us and they were quite, you know, had a very clear discussion with them that that was poor treatment and it was inappropriate. We felt that it was just a bad situation. This was probably four years ago and at least it's pretty cool. But I, you know, I, I do think it's worth, I think your point is, you know, valid. Just as we look at some of these things and these topics, just making a chart of like what, what the tuitions are and, you know, what their frequency of, you know, what's in their contract, if there is any type of term, you know, what that, that tuition looks like and how frequently they can send us increases. I mean, that's a pretty straightforward thing. It'll be helpful for us to know that, see what we can do.
What do we do with NFA at three-year term? Usually I think I contract.
Five, it's a five-year term for the contract. But I think they can change the price, though I think they can raise the rate.
So then maybe we need to pull our kids back from there as well to start sending them some.
Just a point of order, the regular ed budget for the one thousand series went down from last year. It went down, it was just minus point zero, point five two. The special ed budget went up a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And the thing that's driving the expenses and the changes is, is of the needs of special ed students. And there has been a change. And one of the things that change, has changed is some of the required services. And we now have expenditures related to, you know, speech, more speech and language, OT, PT, you know, and other services at the high school. So that they come in and the, the thing to look at is the state's funding of special education. And their excess cost grant has never fully funded the formula that they implemented thirty years ago. And the state gives us such a small amount of money for these special education needs. And this is another thing, I wrote about ECS, but the other thing is the EC, the excess cost grant. And when I was acting superintendent in another district, the state could come in next month, every March, and they can say, oh, we don't have the money to fund what we said we were gonna do. And they cut the allocations to school districts. And I can remember, I got that note in another school district, and it was four hundred and forty thousand dollars in cuts, unanticipated, out of sight, just showed up. So the big thing that we have to do is work with our legislators to see if they can fully fund the formulas that are in existence.
Well, I guess my frustration comes from, right? So Volantown is required to send out to a high school. We are getting a hundred and fourteen thousand dollar cut. Griswold is only getting a forty-seven thousand dollar cut. Their cut, they're making up on our backs by increasing the amount that we have to send to them. There's nothing that we can make up our hundred and fourteen thousand for other than going out and, and begging the other high schools to, to at least meet us halfway when they're only getting a forty-seven thousand dollar cut. Ours is cutting by a hundred and fourteen thousand. And they're gonna raise the amount that, that our tuition is by three and a half percent. It just seems like we're getting hit from all directions. And it seems like we gotta try to bring that back in, rate it back in somehow.
There's no way to rank, the problem is.
I mean, then we cut out Griswold and we send them to Wheeler, which is cheaper.
With the small popular, Wheeler can't absorb all them. They wouldn't be able to.
Sure they can.
They say until a year.
This could be, this could be a topic to look at during the summer months and the fall for the budget in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Because Kate and I met with the first selectman and the chair of their board of ed and the superintendent in Griswold to talk about that. But the Griswold tuitions are set by their board of finance. Did I miss something, Chris?
Yeah, I wanna go back to special ed. Do we have to pay the OT, PT, and all the other services for until age twenty-two?
In addition to the tuition.
I don't know, I don't, I don't think till twenty-two.
Yeah, they can, as long as your captain still gets OT.
Okay.
Any other students done it eighteen, nineteen? And here we are paying, in some cases, hundreds of thousands of dollars until somebody's twenty-two. And the state's cutting our.
Doesn't have the population. We're not Hockit, we're not New Haven. So when we go forward looking to do something to change some of this, we don't have the votes.
Chris, if you go to guidance services in the budget twenty-one, twenty, and you go down to other professional services, and then you look across at the budgets, you know, you see zero, zero, twenty-six hundred, zero, fifteen hundred. Then you see eleven thousand, eight hundred and eighty, eleven thousand, eight hundred and eighty. We wind up paying for guidance services as part of, as an IEP. So that's one of the increases that, that has occurred. And that's generally, that's, that's with the, with the high school students. The other thing is if you move to speech and language services, we budgeted sixteen thousand, three eighty-eight, and that's on twenty-one, fifty, line three forty. That sixteen thousand, three eighty-eight is for high school students receiving speech and language services. So, you know, there are some increased costs that have, that have developed over the years. So this is part of the, the special ed types of things.
The way it works, money we get back for that doesn't come to us, it goes to the town. It goes back to the town. These grants and stuff go to the town, not to us, not to all of us.
So every kid has a guidance counselor in high school? We have to pay an extra eleven thousand dollars because they're a special ed kid?
Yeah.
Well, that seems dumb.
And your school, I'm sure, where do you teach? I'm sure they're doing the same thing.
Oh, no, they don't. It's the same guidance counselors for all kids.
Welcome to my world.
Probably it's being paid by grants and stuff. And the problem is.
All the kids get the same services for guidance.
If you look at them. If you look at the budget, I think if they got it all worked down, though, too, you know, unfortunately, it's very, we don't have a lot of power, unfortunately.
Yeah, well, our power is pulling our students and kicking.
We have no place to put them, other than everything.
We're gonna have to figure it out. I mean, it's gonna cut into their budget then, right? If you pull out, if you pull out three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars worth of kids, that's gonna hurt.
If you pull, you will never pass a budget in town if you shut down the pipeline to Griswold. It won't happen, you know, people would, there's so many people love Griswold High, just like there's some that like NFA. And we're getting more and more of that seem to like Wheeler every year.
A lot of people are also sick and tired of writing a bigger and bigger check.
Right, so the choice is pay higher taxes or shut down one of the schools that is consistently raising the rates so high that our budget can't absorb it, especially with an ECS cut.
It would help with transportation as well. Sarah especially, you talked about all the buses heading south.
No, they have none. They have one person on them. They have none, one person.
I mean, I don't know, Kate, if you wanna get into.
Transportation, let's get out, we're not gonna yell, we're not gonna segue into the transportation. Let's segue into transportation.
Bunch of transportation.
Yeah.
That's further on to.
Rest of the year, you're gonna be a breeze after these sessions.
But it's.
Are we moving to transportation?
We are.
Oh, here it is. Oh, my gosh. Okay. Yeah, why don't you give one to, oh, they're stuck together, okay. This is a transportation, one for you, one for Amy.
We have two choices, because you're gonna raise your taxes, or we're gonna cut out one of them. Cut out two of them.
Four, five, I have one for Didi there.
But the one you send into is gonna be somebody that will give you a raise. Just like we can't go without.
Sure, people would pick NFA as well.
Yeah, but with NFA, it won't make it that much cheaper than Griswold, other than Griswold is very special. If somebody shows up, they screw up.
Okay, now. Okay, our current fleet of bus buses is nine years old. And we have had increased repairs due to wear life. Account twenty-seven forty-three for repairs was a hundred and five in twenty-three, twenty-four. It's gonna be more than that this year. The year before was eighty-four thousand, the year before fifty-two, the year before twenty-four, and the year before nine thousand, nine thousand one hundred dollars. We have expended, as I said, eighty-eight as of this year date, but it's gonna go over the hundred-five.
I think it's gonna be about one sixty from what I've been signing checks and doing. It's gonna bump in around one sixty for this year with maintenance that high. You know, with everything that we're signing, getting repaired constantly.
We've been reviewing this and we did have a transportation committee that was canceled because of snow. And then we had another rescheduled one. But the people who were at that meeting said that it's recommended replacing our six-seventy-seven passenger and two thirty-six passenger buses that have diesel with five-seventy-seven passenger buses and three forty-one passenger gasoline buses with school lines, which submitted the lowest bid and met all specifications as advertised. So rough estimates, these buses, the five larger ones are a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So for six hundred forty-four, five ninety, the three forty-one passengers are three hundred sixty-six, six twenty-seven. So the subtotal is one million, eleven thousand, two seventeen. Rough estimates of trade-ins, six-seventy-seven passenger buses, I just estimated a hundred and eighty. But we might get a little bit more. And the trade-in for the two thirty-six passengers is thirty thousand, so subtotal. So we're looking at a lease purchase of about eight hundred and one thousand dollars. If decided to sign, sorry for the typo, a contract with school line, we will develop an RFP for securing lease purchase quotes, and there is some flexibility with what we got. Background, the other two bids did not fully meet our specifications. One Nation Distribution, they bid on eight seventy-seven passenger buses instead of one forty-eight. The cost would have been, you know, one million, one hundred ninety-one thousand, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. And New England Transports, they did not bid on smaller buses. They had eight seventy-seven passengers, and those were the diesel, which we did not want. And their price for that was still larger than the school lines. Now, school lines is associated with Bluebird and is also associated with the network. O'Connor Motors is our previous person that we bought buses from, you know, the last time. And they were very good. So what we're looking at is, you know.
Besides the diesel.
Do we approve a contract with school lines for the purchase of five-seventy-seven passenger and three forty-one passenger Bluebirds for one million, eleven thousand that meet all, that met all the specifications and arrange for the trade-in of the current buses. But this is a lot of money, but I have to let the EO company know because if I let them know now, these buses can be delivered in July or August for the start of the year. And in the meantime, we make arrangements. Now, the next page, the next page is what the bids came in. And I already described that, but at the bottom of the line, the background information from two thousand sixteen, that's nine years ago, the buses were eighty-three thousand and eighty thousand. And we were able to trade in the buses for two thirty. And on April sixteenth, I was also allowed, I found seventy-five thousand to put a down payment. So we wound up financing four hundred and sixty thousand. And we paid that off in three years, so that we wound up with some savings.
Look at that trade-in value. How can that, look at trade-in value. We're only gonna get two-ten for more.
I mean, used vehicles are supposed to be worth more now. I just put in the transportation agenda for the other day. The fourth page is the purchase order that I wrote on April sixteenth. And I had a down payment, and somebody said, well, how can you write a down payment on the buses? And I said, well, I'll put down ten dollars as a hold fee. So that if we sign a purchase order and send it in, even if we're putting down ten dollars, that purchase order and our credit rating is very good. So we've been very diligent in taking care of things. Now, this is where we are. But before we talk about, you know, deciding what's gonna happen, I felt that it would be important to give you.
Is there anything that we might get from the town to help with this, this price? No, nothing?
No, I talked about that and I talked to Tony. And we've always handled the buses within our budget. But the six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of other projects, we're working with the town on that. And for backup information, this was the, these were the specs that came in on the buses so that you have the actual RFP proposals. And that's what, that's what the committee, that's what the committee received. So this is the information. And it's, you know, it's like the eleventh hour with what's happening. I would have liked to start this process a little bit earlier, but we spent more time on routes than we did with bus replacements. School lines also sent a financing page on their bid. But we checked with different finance companies, and you can get pretty assertive with what's happening. I think there's room for negotiations. That's why I put in a hundred and fifty-two thousand in the budget. And if you decide to do that, I have a little bit of money for repairs in the regular budget. I might be able to cut that back just a little bit. The other thing is, when the buses are delivered by March, if we're gonna stay with our current buses, then I have to tell Tracy because we would wind up going in on their bid process for diesel fuel, which is housed up here. The town has been going out for diesel bids, you know, with their tank outback. And they invited us to participate in that, and we've been doing that for years. But diesel and gas, you know, in the previous years, we did go down to the Shell station and Shell Corporation had a deal where you could get some discount prices with gasoline. But the big thing here is, you know, do we want to look and negotiate? Now, other options. I have a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in the budget. But if we say, okay, we're only gonna buy four buses rather than eight, I'm still gonna have to leave that hundred and fifty-two in the budget to pay for them. Because, you know, there's a certain life cycle. And if we cut that back, then in a few years, we're gonna have to replace the other four buses. I could talk about possibly saving one of the other buses. But in talking to the mechanics about this, the repairs that we've had in these past two years have been incredible. And every time I turn around, I have another invoice for things that need to be repaired. Now, DMV comes to our bus lot unanticipated, and they go through and they do safety checks. So that's the final statement in the proposal, replacing the buses. We want our children on, you know, on buses that we really feel are good. So if the board pursues and approves, the superintendent moving forward with entering a contract with school lines, I call them tomorrow and they put in the order for the buses that we want. And then I also would work with them to see what they could get for the best price in trade-ins. But I also call around to, you know, other places where there were trade-ins. And we did well the last time with our trade-ins. I'm hoping that the buses, because of the cost going up, we might be able to get a little bit more money out of the trade-ins. So this is where we are right now.
So Adam, how many years do you think we have to finance?
Well, the last one I did was, the last one I did was five. But I got the one fifty-two because I times it by seven, and that was close to eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's why I put in the one fifty-two. But there is, if we go with the new buses, then I hope that I don't have to use, you know, some of that money in the other repair. And we had a repair that was nine thousand one year. So if you buy new buses, you're gonna get a couple of years out without things. But there's requirements for tire replacement and other safety checks that you have to do to follow through. So this is what's happening.
Like I said, I think this year's probably around one fifty, one sixty for repairs. I just under a couple of thirty thousand dollars, like, on game sale for broke on the buses.
And the other thing is, I have a note into Tracy to say, does this need to be confirmed by the town? Because in the past, the Board of Ed, and this would be the third, you know, one, you know, two, you know, this would be the third, you know, bus replacement that we've done since I got here. And quite frankly, when I first got here, the buses that we had were the cheapest, most terrible buses. They needed to be replaced, and we did better when we moved over. So, you know, if the board votes to authorize me to enter into the deal with school lines, then I call Tracy and say, okay, what do we have to do? Do we have to go before the town for them to approve this expenditure? Or does the board have the authority to work on their own? And Anthony and Tracy will, you know, will be, you know, give us that.
Then we have to deal with the purchase lease. So any lease of this size with the town, we have to go through their leasing. That's what she indicated to us. So I know we might have done it last time, but now the procurement policy requires them to do all the leases.
To go out to the town, you're saying?
Well, I don't think it's telling me, it's the lease, they're going to work the lease. We're paying for it, but they are, and doing the lease process.
And, you know, the town allowed us to, you know, when we traded in the buses, they allowed us to reduce the cost of the purchase. But they have a right to say, no, we'll trade the buses then and we'll take the money. But the town has always been cooperative with us.
Did we ever look into contracted services instead of replacing all of these buses? That was a discussion that was had, and then nothing ever came of it.
You have to open the, that would have to be negotiated through contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to.
I mean, we're jumping into buses and we're still thinking, you know, contracted services. So now we're jumping into a million-dollar lease.
Why would we have to open a contract if we just turned it over to another company? That would be.
Just get rid of the union employees, not allow.
We wouldn't be.
We would be, yeah.
It's still, it's still an open contractual.
I just don't see how employees can hold a business hostage in this way. I don't think it's correct.
Okay, now.
Megan, Megan.
I will just tell you.
When they, when they say they have to open the contract, they mean they have to effects bargain, meaning we're going to impact a chunk of our employees, so we have to go to the table and negotiate some sort of.
So.
Yep, so you would negotiate some sort of if they're gonna go over to the new company, if there's gonna be a reduction of their jobs. All of that would get discussed with the union as part of the impact bargaining. So it doesn't mean we can't do it, it just means that there are gonna be stipulations potentially around it.
Which makes sense, you know, there would be a negotiation with that company that we researched and RFPed out to. There's probably not that many service companies in our rural area that we can contract to.
Actually, I've contacted one and they would love to meet with us.
Of course, because they're like, want all our money.
I have the lady's name.
Can they get it done by March tenth?
No, this would be like a next year thing.
Well, we've been talking about this for months. You'd think maybe one of the administrators would have handled this instead of a part-time Board of Ed member. And I've been talking to Holly Brown, the customer success manager of First Student. And from what she's telling me, that just a simple phone call and some information, she could have been here putting a full presentation to us. And I just, it seems like there's obfuscation going on, trying to prevent this from happening.
I don't think so. I was definitely discussed during our transportation committee meeting that it is a, it's on the table, like it's not. No, but next steps.
Why isn't it being looked at in tax, this is all, it seems like the taxpayers just don't matter. So this is how we're going to do it.
That's not, that's not, that's not it at all.
There's so many options that have been discussed that aren't even being looked at. That's kind of the feeling that you just can't help but have.
I think it was a timing factor of.
We know better than the taxpayers, so.
No, I don't know about the legality of the action that you're requesting. It's not that it's a bad idea, and we know it's on the table, like that's something. I think we're, we understand that we've gone down a path rightly so we can say, break it, like, put on the brakes, and we wanna, we wanna ride this out and pay the repairs for a whole nother year, which is where this discussion is going to go. If that's where our board feels it makes more sense to put our tax money in the repair, or, you know, just so we can get the information from this and do the. Or, you know, just so we can get the information from this and do the pros and cons and, you know, resource allocation towards the process to move to a privatization option where we might lose, I mean, hopefully, we can rehire all the people that care about our kids and that are, you know, have kids in the school that drive our buses and so forth. And those are the things that matter to, I believe, to our board and our school, is having a more control and oversight of our kids and the whole bus route situation and what can happen and the changes. I think the benefit of having it in-house, I mean, there's pros and cons to both. But, you know, change of weather, change of resourcing of people available and, you know, being able to communicate that you lose your control, I think, in a lot of the senses of having an outsourced company. So that I would think is a big lock for our community to want this solution. But we do, I think it's a worthy cause to have a, you know, a conversation about it and talk with somebody.
I just think anything we wanna do, contract out, it has to put the brakes on everything. It cannot happen for over at least a year. We'll have like another hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty thousand.
But it won't be a million.
Yeah. But I don't think, we looked one time before, and that's fine, we could look again. But any of these things will not happen.
Right, but there's been lots of discussion about dissatisfaction with our transportation, with the fact that kids are getting, there were issues with kids, right? So I've heard that around the table. There was dissatisfaction with the transportation. There's, you know, we have buses going all of these different places, and it seems like it's been status quo for many years, and that's just the way that's done. And then we were supposed to have a consultant, I thought, kind of look at the routes and look at how it could be changed. But then we haven't had any response from a consultant as to how these things can be adjusted.
Yeah, he had to step away, so we're moving with East Con now.
Yeah, so after the last meeting, and I informed you that we had someone.
Right.
The person decided that they no longer were interested in doing it for us, unfortunately. So I have been in contact with East Con on a regular basis. I've spoken to them, I've emailed with them, I provided them the information they requested. I said, please let us know, you know, first off, we have to pay for the service. I said, please let me know what that cost would be. We talked about the routes, we talked about all the different challenges that we were facing. And the person I spoke to was very nice and very knowledgeable. I did talk to him about outsourcing and what that looks like because East Con does outsource. And he gave me, you know, I forgot my notes in the office, I was just thinking about that. He gave me some ballpark figures on averages of, you know, what it costs really per day, per bus to transport kids. You know, field trips are extra if it's, you know, one specific van run, that's extra. Couple other different things that he said. So I have been working with him, the routes that he's looking over for us. I asked him to just solely look at our high school routes for right now. That was the most important that the board requested. So he is in, he and his, the other person that works in his office are in, you know, they've received our information, so I'm waiting on them to provide me with some more information, you know.
Okay, I didn't know that, so thank you for the update.
I think I have a question. So all our special ed transport would have to be contracted out to a different provider, probably?
Well, it would depend. It would depend if that, if that child rides special transportation, then yes, they would also need a van, right? If they need wheelchair access, then they would need a wheelchair access van.
And they need to provide, would they provide the parent that goes with them?
That would still be our, that would still be our parent. So that would, we would have to coordinate, correct? Because there is a parent that rides in one particular, they would have to coordinate picking up here, picking up the child, coming back, go back.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Adam, can I ask you, Adam? Can I ask you a question on the option to lease to purchase?
The what?
The lease to purchase option.
The lease purchase option.
Yeah, so if we wanted to finance with a lease purchase option, do you have, what would that amount to on a yearly expense?
It's a hundred and fifty-two thousand yearly in the budget proposal.
Oh, it's, okay.
Yeah, in the budget proposal I gave you.
So we could either pay a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to maintain our old fleet or pay a hundred and fifty-two thousand to get new buses, lease new ones.
Yes, and Sarah, I was gonna go over some options now for the board to consider. And the board is to consider, you know, approving the proposal as presented, which we've done in the past. If we delay it, that means that we're transferring the buses and everything later in the fall, mid-year, or another time of the year. But we have to repair the buses that we currently have.
But we could, I just wanna make sure I'm correct in trying to like figure out a path forward while addressing questions and concerns of the board, which is we could choose to lease buses for a period of time while we look into outsourcing, which gets us through the hurdle of.
Well, leasing buses.
No, I can work that way.
Would, that might put us in a situation of having buses that don't meet our specifications. And quite frankly, the buses that we're specifying have tinted windows, which we like. They have a wonderful seat for the bus driver, and they have some other components that we requested in the specs. And, you know, so if you're gonna lease a bus, I guess we could go someplace and do it, but then we would have to probably.
Lease to purchase is different than just, yes. So if, what would we be locked into if we do a lease to purchase?
Well, the lease purchase is based on our specifications. I haven't, I haven't looked at just a lease, you know, to lease a bus, if that's what you're talking about, Sarah.
I just didn't know if the lease purchase gave us any flexibility to.
Now.
Get out of it.
To get out of it down the line.
If we lease purchase and it takes us two years to go through and we decide we wanna contract out, what do we do with that lease purchase?
Oh, the contract. Yeah, the contract would include they're taking on the lease purchase or buying the buses outright. And when I've gone through lease purchases in the past, you know, we had our own buses in Region Eighteen, and we went out to, you know, First Student or somebody, and, you know, they bought all of our buses and they worked out an agreement with the bus driver.
If I understand this correctly, we could do the lease purchase now and follow through over the next like twelve months, whatever it takes us to really look into First Student, because I don't know who else is around here. We could see if there's someone else. And if then we decide to go with First Student, they would present us with something to take over that lease purchase. And they would roll that all into the contract they're giving us per child or per bus. And then we'd be free of the lease purchase and we'd be paying just our First Student or whatever bus company, X, Y, Z, to provide our transportation. Is that correct? If I understand correctly?
I think so. I mean.
We can.
Kathy, right?
Am I correct? We would.
I just don't know about them buying up the buses, but.
Well.
They have to negotiate. I mean, that's what would be great, because then you would be able to buy them and then they would absorb them.
And then there's also the, it'd be deal with First Student about buying the buses and the union contract, et cetera. And that takes us into a year or two into this lease purchase. And see, we can by that time see how it's going and would it really save us money? Let them really hand us a real proposal, not one made under three months or trying to do it over six months, a major million-dollar type thing. We'd have time to really look at the union contract, the buses, et cetera, and see what, there may be somebody besides First Student who's trying to break into this area. I don't know.
Yeah, there are a couple. There's a couple that I, I talked about.
See what they all could offer us in like next year's budget, whatever, going forward. But there is the union problem of doing something there.
And that's the other thing I just wanna clarify. Maybe Megan, could you repeat it one more time? The issue with the union is we can't open the contract to negotiate this. Is it another year?
No, so basically, we would have to, when you're gonna make an impact on, when you're gonna make a, when there's gonna be a consequence such as this, you impact bargain. Meaning if somebody's gonna potentially lose their job, there's going to be negotiations around that. Like, is there a severance package? Is there extended benefits? Is there, like, it's all of that stuff when you're gonna make an impact on a group of people this large. They have a right to negotiate what that looks like.
Okay, and that can be done at any time or that, or we have to wait?
Yeah, it should, it should be able to be done at any time.
Okay, that's helpful.
I definitely think looking to see if we can get somebody else doing this cheaper, it'd be great. Take a lot of the maintenance off our problem, take off the personnel problem of trying to find bus drivers.
And that's what it comes down to. Then they're responsible for finding the bus drivers, which we struggle with.
We can go forward with this.
You know, we struggle with how much we're able to pay our bus drivers. We're, we struggle with being able to find, and I love our bus drivers, they're great. And I would love to carry them over to a different company that's able to compensate them more, that is, you know, is able to redo routes or look at the routes and see what the best strategy is for those. And then also be able to absorb a lot of like those maintenance costs that we're doing and those other things. So it's not just a cut and dry thing. I was just curious about where that process was, where that conversation had gone. Like, we had talked about, you know, looking at the consultant. We had talked about looking at, you know, at moving to the contracted services. And my curiosity from this is where is this all fitting into making a decision tonight of, you know, let's sign a purchase order for a million dollars? You know, where are all of these other discussions with respect to this one that seems to be on the table tonight? And so, and how fluid are we gonna be able to have those discussions still once we make this decision tonight, right? Because now we have these buses, and so is the contracted service willing to take those over or not? Or, you know, are the, there's just, there's so many moving pieces. I just kind of was looking for a big picture of where we were at and what the options were other than signing a million dollars.
It sounds like we can do this and then get out of it within a year or two with some costs involved. And if we can find something much cheaper, and like Amy said, there's more than one. So we would need time to get this.
Yeah, it's all about the cost. It's not just the cost. I love the idea of, you know, if our kids wanna go on a field trip today, then there's a, there's a bus driver who would be willing to pick them up and take them on a field trip today because something came up and like we were able to do that. And that flexibility is gonna go away, you know, if you do a contracted service. So it's the same thing with the contracted service for your lunch program, right? There's flexibility. The kids love like Taco Tuesdays and some of these other things. And that flexibility of offering kids things that they really like is gonna go away with contracted services. So it's looking at what is the cost savings? And is it worth the kids not having Taco Tuesday, not being able to go on the field trip? All of those other things. People, they're starting to dislike their outsourced bus situation. Right, and so there's that balance, and what side of the balance are we willing to be on? So, but that's just the question. Sorry, I don't need to.
That's fine.
And one of the things. I expected you guys to talk about it. I was like, well, we talked about it last meeting.
And one of the things the man from East Con had said too, like they do try to, you know, you move forward with a contracted service like that, you know, they do try to take over those drivers, because that was my concern. What do you do about your employees, you know? And so, you know, and he did say, you know, we do have the ability, they do their pay rates, because that's, they're their own, you know, those services are their own entity. So that is, you know, a difference.
So we could look to have two contracts even, one with First Student or X, Y, Z bus company plus East Con for van drivers and type. It could be both, this would give us the time to look into that. It'd probably take, looking into contracted services are usually a year or two in time. It doesn't happen overnight. It's.
And they're going to promise the world, when they give us their proposals, they're going to look like.
Early bird rate, you know, you're gonna get this and it's gonna look financially wonderful. But we've absorbed, you know, cameras on the buses, we've absorbed now we're getting new buses, we have absorbed, you know, our vans. Like, we keep absorbing a lot of that stuff. And at what point can the budget no longer kind of absorb that stuff where we need to send that out someplace else and just pay a flat fee? Or, you know, however they.
Sometimes it's less of a head, it might cost a little more, but sometimes it's less of a head.
Even fuel would be their problem.
Yes, he said that, all that was.
Huge fluctuation that would stress us out.
And we don't have to worry.
Would be our issue.
They'll make the decision whether it's diesel or gas or whatever.
And he did say electric was, because I specifically asked about electric. He did say that electric is ten to twelve years down the line. He said it's not anything. And he said, we are in the eastern, and he said you have no, I don't know what I would say.
You don't have a fleet horse.
Yeah, and like the solar panels, like the infrastructure to actually do electric, like because of where we're located. So that is one of the things that he did say.
It's cold here.
Yeah, he said it's not, it's down the line. I said, well, pass my time then, so.
There are no nuclear buses, maybe.
Hybrid would be a good way to go, I think, for a bus.
Well, even looking at it, like, I mean, it's cost prohibitive too, because, you know, like even the propane was, was.
Too much.
That much more, like so much more out of it. And just from what we're looking at, the gas was still the way to go.
And I guess the bottom line is, just like when you buy a car, like, are you gonna keep just buying cars over and over? Or do you hang on to your car and then you just pay the repairs? I guess it's kind of like.
Yeah, at some point.
I'm driving my. That's what the problem is, that we're like at the point where they are dying.
I know.
We're at dying now. We're at.
I think actually today somebody's check engine light came on. So it was like, you know, I don't know.
What we're paying in repairs would equal like the one fifty-two for the land lease, for the lease purchase. The land, if the land first, land purchase, it'd be less than what we're paying monthly, yearly now. And there's, yeah, somebody else, I just signed something for like thirty grand for repairs. You know, it's, that's why that number is gonna be way higher than what it, it's gonna come in more around one fifty, one sixty this year. For what's happening with, and she's saying this, that won't even be in next month's bill. That'll come up around May.
Do we want to spend another one fifty and go through all the options? Or do we want to spend a million and go through all the options?
We can go through one fifty and still do all the options and then have them take over the land, the lease purchase.
We lose money on the buses, because the first year you only pay for depreciation on a new vehicle. So we would lose a lot of money after a year and year.
Depending how much they want the contract is how much you lose on that first year. It's like with anything, how much they wanna sell that car to you before you get it. And so it's.
So Pete, can I make a motion to approve or authorize the superintendent to enter a contract for the new buses?
To accept the bid?
Yeah, accept the bid, sorry, I don't have my right language. So a motion to authorize the superintendent to accept the bid from the first company? I think it's, I don't know what that is.
Line twelve, face in it?
Or. School lines.
School lines, yes.
School lines.
We do.
Yep, I got it.
You got it.
Yeah.
Typing.
Have a lease purchase though?
Lease purchase, yes.
Lease purchase, yep.
Second.
We have the discussion, so I think we're pretty clear on that. All favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Two? Megan?
Yeah, I'm gonna, this is the one point something million, right? Correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and we, we still haven't evaluated any of the other options, so yeah, I'll be opposed.
Okay. We have, we have a tie at this point.
We don't have any other member on. We don't have any other member on line? No.
So then the motion won't pass.
Right.
It's take, you know, you could.
Table it for next, yeah, we're saying we'll just say, well, um, the motion does not pass. Um, we will table for next meeting with.
Can we do it on the twenty-seventh?
No, we have to do it at the regular meeting on in March meeting.
Can't be added onto the agenda for the twenty-seventh?
Okay, look, you know, you know, I can call, I can call up. The person I'm working with and say that it wasn't approved to go through. And that means that we keep the buses that we have. And I make an adjustment. Uh Chris, could you send me the name of the person that you've been talking to? About buses, you mentioned it at the last several board meetings that there's something that that you. Want to bring in to talk about.
I'll just send you the emails I got from.
Okay, thank you, and then, uh, you know, we'll take a look at what happens with the options. Uh, I will adjust the budget to to increase the, uh, you know, the maintenance and. Get back to you and if something else develops, we could see. I did not check with the anybody on the value of our current fleet. But if something happens with that and we get more money because used vehicles have been, you know, increasing. I I can come up with some modifications with some options, okay?
Just with our bid, our bid has to be responded to within a certain timeframe, right? So we are going to lose our bid. For because at that price, so we would have to rebid. How if we decide in a month change our minds to go to.
Well, Adam, Adam, you should be able to request an extension, correct? Just let them know that you weren't able to, that it did not pass, but we have another meeting. I would assume that they would extend it if we ask.
I I can, I can talk to him, it's a very fine company to work with. And if we need more information, they've they've been very helpful, so, you know, there's a lot of positives with that. And, uh, you know, it was becoming time, but we know there's repairs and there's. Purchase of new buses and the purchase of the new buses does cost a little bit more.
So I think if we're going this route, we need to get more than just first student, we need to get East Con and whatever other companies in the area.
We've been working on that and.
Amy since she was on that panel.
We need to get a number of people in.
So maybe maybe we decide that East Con's our consultant and they're the ones that organize, we pay them to. Bring us.
Oh, they have their own, yeah.
They do their own people.
Yeah, I would be really interested, I'd like I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear East Con's recommendation, honestly, um, even over. An outsourced, I mean, we're gonna need to have the information about the outsourced, but I would definitely. You know, they're more of a neutral party, so I would definitely be interested to hear their perspective.
I just realized, Megan, they have their own bus companies, so they are not as impartial as I thought they were.
Okay. Well, there's that then.
I think we need to plan on having a meeting where we can have a number of companies present to us. And not just add it in in the middle, so we can really look at what they can offer us and what they can offer us.
And we could probably, I mean, we know the towns that outsource. Go to online onto their budgets.
Yeah.
And we can look at the cost of what they're spending, you know. We could look, I mean, there's quite a few that use.
I can promise you that from what I've learned in the few little contacts I've made that. If an administrator from a district contacts any of these companies. They're going to be thrilled, have a bunch of questions and put forth a proposal, they're going to want to know your. And they're, they'll be here, they'd they'd love to talk to if you have time, whoever you delegate to do it. They.
They probably should come to transportation committee, you guys could come to that meeting too. Transportation committee.
I have to work. And I think the transportation committee, if they were doing their job, would have handled all of this in the first place. Maybe I should go and teach them how to do their job. It's a good idea.
I take offense to that, I'm on the transportation committee, Sarah's on it as well. We had our our last, and Megan, we were on for last like on Monday.
Yeah.
When we brought up where do we stand on X, Y, and Z, so. We knew that this was going to be another thing, but we have to review the bids we have on the table.
This is a long process and.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a two-month process, it's gonna take six to ten months.
Well, to make an informed decision, like, cuz this is a big, this is a big deal.
This is a big deal, it's a lot of audience or students, we're talking about families.
I think unfortunately that we. As. A school system found deteriorating buses at a faster rate than we were able to do some of this investigation work, which.
Yes, but they're the top. The the real issue is, we have to make a decision to have buses one way or another running in September.
Right.
And and we are running up against the clock.
We have a whole fleet.
But they're falling apart, Chris. Is the problem.
It's falling apart at thirty grand a month.
And so when you when you think about the safety for kids. That we're putting on these buses, like we are running up against a real hard deadline. To be able to safely transport our students and the safety of our workers, our bus drivers. So. We unfortunately are in a position where our buses are deteriorating quicker than we had anticipated. And we will have to come to make some decision one way or another.
Well, in my defense, we had a motion that passed through our consultant over three months ago. We've been discussing this for a long time and it's just been utterly ignored, so. That's what happens when things get ignored and not acted on is that now we're running into other problems.
I would I would challenge your statement there, the the idea to have a consultant. Was not ignored, the transportation committee talked about it, they had one, we now have another one, so.
And he resigned less than a month ago, and she got somebody within less than thirty days, another consultant. We had got one and then the other one came along, but.
No, unfortunately, for exigent circumstances, had to bow, you know, bow down from the position we hired him for.
No matter what we do, even if we want to have this by next, not this summer, the next budget, we need to really get moving on this in general. It blew up, the buses.
One way or another, we need to be able to have safe and reliable transportation come September.
I'll never vote yes on a million dollars when all the options are.
Yeah, well, that's what I was, that's a good idea of getting all these options, but we've got to get them going shortly. Get them in and get them. And then maybe by then we'll have a new superintendent, we'll have his input into it, he may have a different idea. He may have had good experiences being contracted out, maybe not. We have a different perspective, but I think we really have.
And just, yeah, it's not to interrupt, that's that's.
Focus on getting this.
Right, right, I think, good point, I think it's good, yeah. And it's really, if, you know, I I million dollars, I know that's the the long-term piece of it, it's a hundred and fifty.
A year.
From the lease perspective versus a hundred and sixty of the um the maintenance, so I think that's where. We were kind of thinking in the present moment of what our current needs are, but I, you know, I I want to think long-term and big picture and. Do this the right way, which is not to diminish or squash anybody's input on on alternative. Options is it's always good to be mindful of that. Uh, but it we do, we are up against some more emergent needs too, so. We will ask for an extension.
Be able to come to transportation if it was later in the evening?
No, it's like the timing is not a an issue, but we also do have a.
Have to get, you know, this moving along. You know, get it all and begging to hopefully you can come. And we can get a number of presentations.
Okay. Let's go, let's let's move on to policies, these are, these are always fun. Um, okay, the first one is four one five two spot six, it's family medical leave, this is the FMLA. Um, that we've had on the table, we took it off for a while. But I, um. I know we've made our our updates, DeeDee, um. Is there anything still outstanding that we were looking for? Maybe, Megan, I I don't know if you were able to finally look at that.
Yeah, no, I think we made all the adjustments that we were looking at this go-around. Um, it wasn't, I mean, the changes were fairly immaterial, um. Just kind of updating some things like the reference to like Personnel Department and things of that nature.
Okay. Yeah, I I think we were, I felt good about it a few. Turns back, so. Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Unheard, motion passes to approve.
Can I bring up one thing about policies? I was reading in the newsletter we get from Kate that we have to have a certain mandated. Uh. Policy about behavior and then we have to have a ma- we we have to develop our own policy or we could use the state one. Of how we are gonna discipline people and uh what training we're gonna give people.
Didn't we do that?
We do have a, we did do a quote of ethics and.
Did we do all that?
No, I think two years ago we did, though, like over a year.
But there's a new one that's mandated now, there's a new one that's being like June, July first.
Okay.
That there's teacher training and each school has to develop how they're gonna. Do their actual, as opposed to expulsion, suspension, but.
DeeDee, you sees these come through, so she's on it about getting those forward.
See. I think it's about, well, there's, there's a big update to the Title Nine. Thing that is removing a lot of the changes they've done over the last few years.
Yeah, and it says it's gotta be done, tr- teacher training by July first.
Costs more money?
Probably teacher training.
No.
Well, we already do, if it just subbing one training for another, we're probably good.
But. I believe it's more for bigger schools, like high schools and stuff. But it has to do with suspensions, expulsions, that you not have those policies.
I'll look into it, it'll probably be on the next agenda.
She always, she can, if we see, if we see like even the inkling in the newsletter, it's like on our list the next week.
Yeah.
Um, no, no, it's good, it's great, I think you get the automatic update, like it's kind of the way they could do things, so. Uh, but thank you, Cathy, for that.
Yeah, I was just reading that today, it's like, oh my god.
Yeah, okay. So we have a second reading, now the the remainder are for, um. For the superintendent, you know, policies we have, I think, um, we just made some minor updates that made sense for what we were. How we were actually doing this, so.
Yeah. For the books of what your changes were because we didn't have it in the package.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to get to it right now, um. It's two one four one recruitment and appointment of superintendent.
Is it the B?
Um, there's.
I just wanted to verify the changes that you guys.
Yes.
Because it was done in executive session.
Right.
I just want to make sure I have.
I thought everything looked good when I saw it.
I got it.
Okay, do you have a a motion to?
Motion.
Technically, it's already approved.
Okay, it is, it is, okay, so.
Wanted to verify that you all, because there wasn't present.
That the changes were made properly, okay, we we got you, but it looks good to me, it looks accurate to what we were discussed. And then the same goes for two one four one, correct?
That was.
Oh, um, sorry, there was.
The one four one.
B and A.
Yeah, okay. And then I know you did the flow, you added the flow chart.
Yeah.
Which we had reviewed and seen, so that's good information.
Yeah, so tomorrow's the last day for people to do the survey.
The surveys, yes. It's such a quick survey too, it's pretty, yeah.
I love the open-ended questions today.
And the town has put out, I think the the link in the, I don't, you probably know this, but the link that was. On the sheet of paper wasn't active, so you have to have the link that. The live link above it, like if you're just a forward, the sheet, you can't like press the sheet, it won't go to the actual link. Um, but. The town put the link above in theirs and that's what they forwarded to Dwelling, so I think and yours has a live link on the website, so I think. Anyone that can see it publicly can get the live link. If you see anything, they'll let us know, because you can. Okay, new business. Or we do what?
You want to go through the job?
Yeah, the the job description, sorry.
Because, yes, revised version, I don't know if you want to send it. Do you know what has any changes to it?
I think this is the one that we did online, right, with we uh were emailing?
No, that is, that's the job posting, that's all it was like.
Yeah, this is like the.
The next, the next document is the actual.
It's not a policy or anything, it's just a job description.
But it is something that is a document that usually the board would edit or approve.
I think we have been editing it. We all went, I remember, well, I know, I went wow when I first read all of it.
The qualifications, yeah, yeah.
Animated looked easy for all these years.
I know, we're not gonna get any applicants, no applicants when they say, I'm there for two hour, two days a week, getting paid nothing to do everything.
All this, yeah.
Be like, or Amy's doing it all and she deserves a lot.
I can go for a third reading, you know, or Mary said she was gonna have somebody at Kate look it over too and get back, but I haven't heard from her.
Why don't we just go for a third reading if it's still fluid with with her reviews too?
Does have changes, please email.
Sounds good. Okay, and then, yeah, and the same with the contract. She was gonna look at that too.
Is she gonna be here the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Yes, she's gonna be here.
Is that meeting executive session?
No, that's open to the public, because she's gonna be going over all the data that she's collected from.
Yeah, it's an open meeting, it's not, it's like a, it's like a non-meeting, it's not like a. I think it's considered a non-meeting.
It is just.
Special meeting.
But she said it's to review everything.
I almost hope that we have so many people that show up that we're gonna need to go into the school because everybody wants to hear.
Wouldn't that be awesome?
What she has to say.
You think, so what, here, I'd be amazed.
I'm 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 being optimistic. I would love it for people in the town to come and hear the findings that this outside person. Has taken all of this data and all the suggestions and created some stuff about our town, I. I would think that it would be. A great opportunity for. Those in the town to see what our school does.
Yeah, well, the nice thing is that we are like, uh, what she's gonna put together for reports and that's gonna go out on the, you know, the websites and we'll share it with. I know.
DeeDee, are we gonna zoom the meeting on the twenty-third so people can listen?
Live if you want.
Yeah, I guess we should.
Yeah, we'll talk to Mary to see what like what. Structure looks like and I don't know, and obviously if people can come here.
People do watch us.
Okay, are we moving to new business?
Yep.
Okay, we have a building use request. For. Farmers Market is our classic, yeah. Building use.
Motion.
Do we have a motion to approve the?
Can you sign that and I'll send it to Jack?
Oh, sure, yeah, do we have a motion to approve building use for the Farmers Market? Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Non-hearing motion passes to approve the building school facility request for the Volontown ADC.
Down the bomb, every year Jack says this is his last year of doing it. We get one of these.
He's done a good job with that. Yes.
Does a lot for the town.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's good, Jack would like that, thank you.
Um, okay, then we have a. Still, you know, this season. Okay, uh, snow power RFP.
Are we, are we going out to bid again?
Yeah.
We don't like our snow power?
It's the contract is on.
Okay.
For two years, you know.
I guess motion to authorize the superintendent. To go out for snow power bid again?
Yeah, snow power bid.
High school choices.
No, we're doing snow power bid.
We're just gonna send this out, I I don't, we don't have a bid yet. We're just gonna send this out, I, I don't, we don't have a bid yet, I-
No, we're just approving our-
Yeah, approving the RFP and then we'll come back to you with who's bidding on this.
So, do we need a motion for that or just an FYI?
We have approved the other RFPs.
Okay.
So, do we have somebody through this year?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, it says, so 2025 would be September and then for those-
All in favor?
Oh, I'm, just one thing, the sealed bids have to be, we gotta fix that date, it says February 27th, they have to be in by 17th on this.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we gotta change that.
Yep.
Yep.
We have that, that's the, no, this is the field trip out of state, we have to, what do you, you're just still on the bid?
On, you're going on.
Okay, so, we approved the snowplowing RFP for 25 through 27, as amended with updated dates. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And heard, motion passes. Okay, so-
Kathy, can you give that to me, what you wrote?
Oh, we just-
And then I'll, I'll put it in the edit, okay. Thank you.
So, we did get a, a last minute field trip request, can we add that?
To our reviews.
Yeah, there's a field, out of state field trip.
Do we have to do a motion to add it to the agenda?
Yeah, can we add a, a motion to add a field trip request to new business?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion passes. We need a motion to approve the field trip request for the kindergarten and fourth grade buddies to go to, out of state, to Westerly, Rhode Island. They are gonna be going bowling with their buddies, they need two buses, and they're gonna be gone for three hours to, to work on getting along with others, taking turns and dealing with feelings.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, hope not. Motion passes.
You're not allowed.
Dealing with feelings.
Little kindergartners. That was so, I must say, I did that last, that last year because Lila was a big buddy in fourth grade and I went to Alec's and it was like the cutest, it was the cutest thing ever. And like, they did actually get along and they like worked with their buddy.
They were the same teachers.
Yeah, they were just so lovely, it was really cute of them.
Love being big buddies.
I do. Okay. All right, item number three is high school choices for 26, 27, so kind of in line with some of our discussions that we've had across the board. Because it's not a, a budgetary item for this year, we weren't gonna talk about it in budgets, but want it to be noted for the record that we will be discussing this, it doesn't have to be all planned out tonight, but it's just something that we want to include in terms of our evaluations of, of how the budget works.
One of the things that came up is, we don't really have anybody going up to Killenley Boag, but by law, you gotta have a Boag school. Our buses are all tending to go south, Ledger has a Boag program. I don't know if they'd be, they'd probably be willing to, we don't have anyone in the program right now. And the same thing at Ellis Tech, we have very few going to Ellis Tech. So, once those two come off the list, what we had talked about, that QVC, Community College, we have no one going there. And then over the next four years, hopefully, we could drop number four and five on this, you know, so we don't have everything heading up there, 74 miles, heading that way, 54 miles. I don't, did anybody able, I don't know if we looked into Ledger Boag yet.
Has it, yeah, we have not done the first two.
And if you keep Ellis-
Yeah.
Killenley is only, I don't think it's very, you know, so if you keep, if you have to go up there for Ellis anyways.
Why, why do we have to go for Ellis?
Oh, you don't, you could change Ellis, but I'm just saying if you end it, if you keep Ellis, I mean, Killenley's not that, it, I think it would be a moot point to then switch to Ledger if you're still gonna keep that, like, it doesn't make sense driving wise, I guess, I would say.
We kinda talked about transportation a couple times ago, was get rid of the stuff north of here and look into Grasso Tech as an alternative, at that they pretty much offer what Ellis does. They're, and then everything is going south, Grasso is within a mile, it's on the, the thing on the wheel is going that way and-
The Baguette School.
Yeah, get rid of number seven, number four and number five. But there were some people who were very, even though-
No one's going to number seven now. Why don't we strike it right now so nobody signs up for it?
We need a Boag option.
We need a Boag.
No, I mean, Sarah is quite a long, you know, community, and if nobody's going now, we should just strike it so we don't have somebody sign up next year.
We need to look into the Ledger Boag and Grasso, because they're, whether they're willing to take our students and, and they offer a similar program. There aren't many going there now.
Yeah, 17 at Ellis.
Okay, discussion on this side?
So, I think, oh, let me write two comments. One, I, I agree with Chris on striking QBCC right now because nobody's enrolled and we can take that one off the list. I think what I'd like to put on the table is that we think about a framework for reviewing all of the high schools.
Yes.
Because I think we need to have a way to think through the options that goes beyond just location, I think is important, but I also want to understand, why do we feel like we have to have three high school, three regular traditional high schools? Why do we feel like we have to offer multiple tech schools? And understand, just have a framework by which we can group and evaluate schools to make a decision around which one or ones we want to go to. And I don't, and secondary to that is a discussion of, of the current schools. I know you have all of the tuition, but I think getting to some of the questions on what is in the contract and what are the contract terms, and having that laid out side by side, I think would be two, for me, would be two really important pieces of information that I think the board could use to review and then come to a discussion. And then separately, if we can advance some conversations with, whether it's Grasso or Ledger or any other school that we might think about sending to, just to understand what that might entail, like, and just try to have a methodical way of moving through this, I think is really what I'm trying to push for with, with that.
That's why, yeah, it's a 26, 27 budgetary.
Yeah.
So we have, we give ourselves a year to really make the, the right type of decisions.
So this would be for kids entering high school in 2020.
627, that's when you have to have, well, the, the children start making their, they get their initial information mid-September. So we have from now until mid-September to come out with a document, and you might be able to get a first reading July 1st or even June 1st. And I was just gonna suggest the Junior High High School Transition Committee meet and maybe assign a board member or two to just review that so that we can come back with a, you know, if there's any changes.
I think there are a lot of questions, like, what are the implications of those 22 kids not going to a tuition free school? And then that tuition then being placed, what if they don't get into Grasso or the other one, you know, and those kids, so now we have their tuition, we have to remember at a public school.
Yeah.
And our programs equal, is Grasso gonna have a sequel?
So I think there's a lot of questions to that, like, need to be written down.
That's in the framework of like, yeah, the framework of like, apple jabs is what they offer.
The other thing too is like, if we get all of the schools, and, and just like thinking transportation and stuff, if we get all of the schools in a generalized area, that's gonna be easier for transportation.
Yes.
Are we gonna then be able to like, offer like a late bus or something like that? Like, to be able to, I know, and, and I know that a lot of kids aren't able to participate in some of the after-school activities and things because they don't have the rights home. And so, if they're all in a generalized area and, and we could do like a late bus type thing after dropping off the elementary, then somebody goes back and, you know, picks up all of the kids and, and transports them back here and, and the parents can come pick them back at Volontown. But it gives the kids more options if it's all in a centralized area. If we say, you know, we're only gonna offer a late bus for NFA, but a kid is up at Ellis Tech and they're like, well, I'd like a late bus, like, that's not fair, you know, at least if everybody's in the same vicinity. It makes those conversations, that possibility, a little bit easier too. If we whittle this down to something more manageable rather than all the high schools that we currently offer.
And I think the feeling was that if you're somewhere now, you'd be able to finish it out.
Right.
You know, another, if the max would be four more years, we're dealing with that-
Right, but I mean, if we whittle it down from eight to half of that, everybody is in a consolidated area, we could offer something like that which would be beneficial to those kids that wouldn't otherwise be able to participate in some of those activities. And I definitely think it would, it would boost us also, like, you know, as the time goes on, you, you put out to parents a survey, like, what has your high school experience been with these schools, what, you know, for your child, et cetera. I just think that that, that input is probably also important. You know, if they have younger kids in the pipeline, were they looking for their next child to go to the same school? Like, you know, so there's intricacies there, but that, that would be important to have that, you know, of the parents we're sending, you know.
To go along with what Sarah said earlier in a way, is, we have to be careful, we're not taking educational opportunities of any sort away from any student when we're looking at school choices as well. We don't wanna cut in any way there.
Norwich Tech.
Thank you, Christopher, that is exactly right, that's exactly right. And that's why I think we've had so many options.
Norwich Tech is nothing like Ellis. Norwich Tech is very computer focused, where Grasso is more like Ellis. I'm not sure quite how much, but they're more standard trades like plumbing, electrical, which is not Norwich Tech at all.
Which we will put in the framework when we just research it, so.
I think we're all moving at it with the same mindset, which will be very helpful.
Yeah, so, I was just gonna say, Adam, you mentioned if you wanted, you want a board member to join the-
Yeah, just to have a, have a study group come back with a, with a review and say, this is what, you know, we would recommend based on the educational specifications, because we have a whole group of faculty that work with the high school transitions, and when the high schools call us, they give us compliments about the way that our students have been prepared and what's happening. Nate Quistle is coming into the March meeting to give us an update on NFA, and he's gonna have some information about the successes of our children, but if we just say, you know, what is the best possible high school choices to the group of educators that work with the students, then they can come back and they can give you a good working plan.
And should we have another working group with just the specialized placements? Because we have a huge number of specialized placements.
That is also something to consider in the group, because there are certain programs that are at Griswold that are less than NFA for certain things, and there are some things at NFA that might be more or less that are similar to Griswold, like, that is also a consideration. If you were to take those two and X one of them, you, you would have to look at that and see.
I think that's part of the framework, like, I think that's part of how, like, how do you in totality evaluate? So, I would be happy to be one of the board people.
Then, Amy, if, you know, if you could maybe set up a time with-
I think our next meeting is in March, it's on the early dismissal day, so we hold our meet, a lot of our meetings on those, on those days, yeah.
I would love to hear Roy's general thoughts on all of this as well. Sure, he would have some input there.
I think, just like, yeah, like, that's what I was thinking, that he would probably say something along those lines of what he just said, just because knowing him and how he helps kids select the right place, those two have very different placements.
Yeah.
As a side note to what Adam just said, Nate is coming in March 13th.
Yes, correct.
Is Mary also coming that day?
She's gone.
No. Okay.
Yeah, we have a hard schedule after the 27th.
We checked on that miss.
Just making sure before we, I know. Well, that way, if she was coming, like, we could give him enough advance notice to move him to a different meeting. That was the only reason I was asking before.
So, do we definitely want to eliminate number seven?
No, I think that's just a pointing.
We want to eliminate number seven.
Yeah, if nobody's going, then you know.
And I don't think-
She's talking about the QB, QB, we're just trying to, to make a motion to eliminate the, what is it, Quinbad Valley, the QBCC at school?
Nobody's going there. There's no one going.
Do you have to, do you have to, is there like a contract?
Look at the contract?
I don't think so.
I think we just wait on that for now and we'll, we'll just, we'll just do some quick review, that's the easiest one to kind of quickly look at, but-
I don't know what anybody is signing up for.
In the meantime.
Well, it, it would be for next year, for, are the current seventh graders, we would remove the option for the current seventh grade class.
Does Three Rivers have the same type of program that QBCC does?
We have had students go to Three Rivers if their parents choose to transport them. So, that has happened in the past, and if somebody comes to me and they have like one of the magnet schools that they want to go to, then we would pay the tuition, but the parent would have to supply the transportation, Chris. Okay, so, we get a savings with that.
Great. Item number four is the faculty-staff project.
Yeah, here, we, Amy and I have prepared a report. Amy, why don't you start talking about it? And I'll be right back, I need to adjust a processor.
So, one of the, Adam asked me to review the faculty and staff assignments, and looking at classroom sizes, looking at our budget, and really what, what is the necessity to hire? And within teacher certifications that we have already in the building, I did suggest to him that, you know, we consolidate one grade level that has 16, so they would be going into second grade as one. We would then move the first gr, the second grade teacher down to first grade, because that is a double class. Our third grade teacher would be moving to seventh grade social studies. So, Mrs. Britt would be moving to seventh grade social studies. Mr. Cretoro would be moving to-
Junior high math.
Junior high math, so six to eight math.
Does he take over all the sixth, seventh, eighth grade math?
That would be six, seven, eight, yep. So, based on their certifications, they both can do that.
He'd be homeroom six grade.
Yeah, so basically a slip into Jackie's role.
Yeah, yep. And then, I worked on reassigning, so we have a, a double third coming up and then a single fourth. So, Ed is going to go down to three, and Ms. Barber is gonna stay in four.
She was so excited to have it.
I know. And so that's kind of the nature of-
It was a one-declass, I mean, that's a-
He's a one. It's hard with ones, you know, it's babies up, it's hard with ones. Just effectively utilizing our staff and, and is it really necessary to hire someone? Not really, you know, when you look at it in this manner. So, one of the other pieces is, we had a job description many, many years ago for a library reading integration specialist, and that was held by Mrs. Kelly many years ago. So, she would then be moving back into that role to suffice for Mrs. Voland that's retiring. So, Mrs. Kelly would be moving into that role.
She's still doing reading specialist too?
So she'll do some SRVI through four, she'll do five through eight.
Okay.
And then, one of our special education teachers, based on her schedule, in the afternoon, would be doing the intensive intervention for K through four. So, we're gonna job share that a little bit there. And then, you know, preschool has been, so we applied for, so, let me back up. So, the Office of Early Childhood basically told us, you're gonna get cut in half for your funding, because we are part-day spaces. So, we're not half-day, we're part-day because they come less than three hours. So, we've had that for quite a long time, we have 44 spaces. We do have declining enrollment in our preschool, there are no babies out there, they're very hard to come by. So, what we did was, we looked at the formula of what they were willing to pay us for a three, well, more than a three and a half hour day up to a six-hour school day. One of the things that the School Readiness Council voted on was to move to a- One of the things that the School Readiness Council voted on was to move to a three- and four-year-old program that was, that goes from eight-fifty to noon, just about, so we will get that full funding. And then we will have an extended day program for four-year-olds only, or, as we, we call them in the building, bur babies. So, those babies that, when they move the birth year, the birth date to September one, it'll now give parents an option if they don't want to move them to kindergarten, they can stay in that, stay the full day. And then we're going to do some pre-literacy, pre-math. All those kinds of things for them, because that'll then be their cohort, and then move with them. And that is the nature of, you know, there's working moms, working dads. Nobody can stay home with kids, it's really hard. Part, part-day is hard for people unless you have a grandma at home, or if you, if you work part-time. So, it is a big change for our program, but we feel that in light of the September birthdate change, in light of parents wanting, you know, really hoping their kids for a full day, we will still give four-year-olds the option if they want to leave at noon. Like, some, some people want their kids to come back home, you know, it's travel, it's whatever it is. Same, they can have, definitely have that option, so it'll be three and four, and then extended day for them. And my point in explaining that to you is, that is going to affect the numbers that go into kindergarten. So, some people, so there's probably maybe six or seven kids that are fall babies, that were, they're going to, their parents and, and my staff are going to have to decide, are we going on, we offer a waiver, or are they going to remain back? So, that's going to fluctuate that number between preschool and kindergarten a little bit there. So, we could have a high kindergarten with, you know, what, twenty kids, or we could have fourteen. And then they'd be back in preschool. So, we're contending with that at the moment. Kindergarten is one of those grades that you should try to keep it to, if you can, just because they're very little. So, that's, so those are the reasons behind these staffing changes and not hiring, because within our staff. So, one of the things would be then to, Mr. C. taking over sixth or eighth grade math. You would need to decide on the technology position, are you going to do a certified staff technology position? Or an outsourced, and we had kind of gone through that before when this position was coming up, and how, what was that going to look like? So, that's something just, over the next couple of months, have to decide what's going to happen.
We have to decide whether it's going to be certified, or say, somebody with a good amount of tech experience that can actually fix things.
Or you're just going to hire and learn, like, what, whatever the.
Not necessarily go teach a class on how to do X, Y, Z. They could help the teacher.
It would just be like a civil, right, like, just a civil position.
What are the class sizes for the doubles, like, first grade, approximate third grade, fifth grade?
So, those doubles, so collectively, like, I know right now that current second grade is twenty. The current, what was the other grade?
What's current? I guess kindergarten.
Kindergarten's twenty-four. Yeah, so it's a pretty big, that's a pretty big one.
Well, we need more powers to go into that second grade class, as it gets more on the bigger side.
If they remain as a single, and, let's say they grow, because you know what's going to happen, people are going to come to the door and say, when I enroll my five children into second grade, and that, and that's sometimes what happens. But we'll just rearrange the staff that we have, you know, and, and see what happens with that.
Yeah, you need a little more support with second graders than you do with a seventh grade.
Correct, yeah. They're learning to read, they're doing all those things.
Yeah, they found out with that, that single, you know.
So.
Fifteen per person class, they needed one.
All we're looking to hire is the technology position.
It would be the technology, whoever that needs to be built.
Teachers, we're good to go. And we're good with our specialized teachers.
Yep, yep.
Okay, good.
I mean, it's just the way that it works this year, you know, some years it works, the puzzle's fit, the pieces fit.
And this is very early for us to give you next year's assignments, but because of the budget and what's happening, we needed to make some decisions early, and the teachers, the faculty has been very helpful. People put in their retirement notices to give us time to make some adjustments, and that was very helpful. Amy, the second page, you know, so we've had five retirements that will occur, of course, the board's doing the superintendent search. Amy is going to search for an intern again. We use a REAP grant for that, so that's not in the school budget, but that's with the funds that are available. We're constantly advertising for new drivers. Okay, funds in the Health Services account, twenty-one, three, four, oh, we have a proposed, proposal for a certified nurse assistant for handicap support. That's forty-six thousand dollars, that's new. So, that was in the Health Services, and then a teacher has transferred, has opened up a position of Technology Coordinator, and we're looking at that quite closely, and hopefully, by the next board meeting, we could come up with a route that we want to go. Hire a certified teacher, well, we'll have to review that. Hire a classified year-round person with technology certifications, or secure contracted services from Learn, and North Stonington and Preston have had some successes with that. So, that's, that's some of the things that we're reviewing. And I may have one other thing that I, I will bring up that might bring us some potential cost savings, but I, I, you know, just, just reviewed that when I was reviewing the staff, and I'll come back next meeting with that. So, that's where we are with the staffing.
Are we looking to hire our own CNA or contract it out?
I'm sorry, Cathy, what is it?
Are we looking to hire our own CNA or contract it out?
We have to contract it.
Yeah, we have to contract, Cathy, because if we hired a person and, you know, the students aren't here, we have to pay them. So, that would be much more, plus there's benefits and other things that we would have to consider.
Adam, is there anything in the budget, like, a little bit of money, protected money or something, like, in the event that we do get new students enrolling? Like, it, it looks like we are up against your ability to reconfigure everybody, like, you have reconfigured for what we are, but if we have a change in enrollment and we need to hire new teachers.
We have the ability to absorb, Sarah.
We do, okay, that's what I want to make sure.
And that's a big thing.
Yeah.
And we, we were reviewing numbers, you know, but right now, that's what we're projecting.
Yeah, that's okay, I just want to make sure that, like, we're not hampering you.
Yeah, and, and I think that, you know, when you look at their, the teacher contract, and you look at the numbers in the contract, I don't think we would ever reach that. You know, I think it's like twenty-three for kids in, you know, up until second grade. You know, paris support can be just as effective in a classroom.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that whether it's a teacher or a parent. Yeah, yeah, but it's just that you have, you were not.
And usually.
Grabbing it down to nothing, yeah.
Usually in February, that's when you send out the non-renewals for non-tenure teachers, and we had long discussions about that, and we decided that this is the staff that we need, and there are, you know, we eliminated a special ed teacher, we eliminated, you know, a tech person, so we have cut back in, in positions.
And the technology.
And we, and then we had a transfer for the math, so, you know, all of those things added together, and maybe we might have some savings with technology.
So, I know, just, just the question on what, you know, some of the things that Margaret has done so well, I, I do like the idea that we're bringing back some resourcing into the, you know, the library media services, and think, I think I heard something about just even, you know, researching, research studies and, and things like that, which is great. On the, on the tech side, like, you know, just typing and, and general computer awareness, is that going to be folded into that as well?
Yes, yeah, so we will still keep a lot of those programs, and remember, specials is like exploratory, so, you know, anyone can, they can type, that's what they do, they use the edutyping, whatever. You know, and conduct that and do that for the first time, it's, because that is a huge skill that kids need to have. And there's a lot of tech things too, that, you know, just general Google Suite, the Canvas and things like that, that are just woven into that position, and Andrea and I have talked a lot about it, and a lot about what her and Margaret did prior, and really like bringing that back now that, you know, she's back in there. Because a lot of those things are reading-based and, and research-based, and teaching kids how to research on the computer and do all those things, and support their SRPs and support all that kind of stuff. So, we did, you know, we talked a lot about that.
Great, that's great.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, I.
Technology, I'm sorry, the Technology Coordinator, are we going to be advertising for that? Do we have to make a decision on what we want certified or?
I, I think you're going to have to decide what is, you know, do, do you want to just get the company to come and fix when we need something fixed, and, you know, map out, like, and the benefit is, Mike is obviously not retiring, so he's still here, so, you know, if you had somebody in-house, that person really could work with him. You know, if you did hire.
He's teaching algebra, I know.
I know. If you did, if you did hire a person, I would say it probably would be beneficial to offer Mike to come in over the summer, a couple of days, and work with that person, right? Because there's a lot of onboarding that happens all summer long. So, that's just, or would you hire Learn and, or Eastcon, and they come in, they do their thing, and they go, you know, whatever.
Yeah, maybe just a couple testimonials on that.
Isn't having Mike, they're very spoiled, and that's, you know, their screen breaks, they go right down, they get a new screen, you're back to go. I mean, Learn, it would be, well, you got to wait till Friday, you know, you got to loan her until that, you know, it's just different, it's just different.
Well, thank you for that update, appreciate it. All right, that concludes our new business. Like I said, Thursday, at six P, six PM, Thursday the twenty-seventh, keep that in your books. And then that's Thursday, March thirteenth, is the next office meeting. Okay, well, thank you so much, Amy and DeeDee. Do we have a motion to invite Mr. Burrows into executive session?
Motion.
Okay.
Approved?
One of us.
Am I opposed, unheard? Motion passes to invite Adam to the executive session.
Thanks, Amy. I appreciate your patience, so.
Okay.
I'm okay.
Yeah, now we're, we're back in session. So, like, to make the motion to approve the administrative contracts as amended?
Motion.
Second, okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, unheard? It's unanimous. Motion passes to approve the administrative contracts as amended. All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion.
Okay, that went to definitely Val and Sarah. There we go. Okay, that's nine oh five.
You're, you're in on that High School Choices Committee.
I am.
Yeah, okay.
I got you. Kate, I don't think you want this floating around.